Good afternoon, everyone.
April the fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, I'd like to call this meeting to order. We do have a certification of a quorum this time. Like to have a pledge of allegiance and invocation.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of our states of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one indivisible.
Councilman Wallace, would you lead us?
Dear Lord, thank you for this day and all the blessings you give us. I just ask that you watch over us tonight as we go through the city's business and watch over all those who are with us tonight and those who are no longer with us. And I ask that you bless us all that are here and also bless our decisions that we make and help everybody have a safe trip home. In your name we pray.
Amen. Thank you. All right, this time we're going to go into item number four, special recognition. Item number one, Keep El Campo Beautiful recognition for recycling efforts and Gold Star status.
Yes, and you can see on your screen both certificates that have been presented to Keep El Campo Beautiful from Keep Texas Beautiful regarding their recycling efforts and their Gold Star status. So special recognition goes to Bill Smart, the chair of that board for you. They work hard. And Crystal Hasselmeier, your staff liaison for that board. We just wanted to let you, make you aware of it.
Well, I'd like to add a little something to it. We want to, you know, just tell the board, thank y'all very much for everything y'all do in helping keep El Campo beautiful. And it Gold Star means a lot and appreciate all of your efforts and everything that you and your team are doing.
Mayor, Bill, you're a real asset to this community and we're blessed to have you in El Campo and thank you for so much that you do.
All right, and item number two, we are, we have a proclamation, April twenty twenty-five, as the fair housing month. So we, this act was designed to protect Americans from discrimination in the sale, rental, and financing of housing based on race, national origin, and religion. The act later extended to sex, disability, and family status. So this is, like I said, the Fair Housing Act and that is for the month of April.
Thank you, Mayor.
This time we're going to move into public comments, item number five. I believe we got one speaker that wants to speak. Dustin, if you could, put the podium there, give us your name and address.
Hello, my name is Dustin. I live in Morton County. It took a minute, but finally some progress from the Attorney General getting something back. One second.
Hey, Mr. Speaker, hello. What's going on, man? How are you?
Not so much.
So there was movement on your case. In fact, some of your cases coincide with other complainings in different jurisdictions, and I think that's what's taking so long. But I think in the end, it's to your advantage more of what the attorney's going through.
So pretty much it's in my favor. So the thing I don't understand is how does the commissioners in Morton County follow the law for thirty odd six and thirty odd times, but El Campo cannot? I believe it's just not good leadership from the mayor and he's being flojo. It is not good. He's not thinking for himself and not going to other communities to find out, oh, what we're doing? Oh, let me see if I can help them. But it seems like y'all are wrong. Y'all should fix it and follow the law and make sure y'all do not get fined by the Attorney General. I do not want to see that. We can spend that money somewheres else, especially at that park. Y'all didn't want to help and upgrade over there at Friendship Park. So thank you for your time. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item number six, consent agenda. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve it?
Mayor, I make a motion. We approve the consent agenda.
We've got a motion on the floor?
A second.
In a second? Any discussion? Mr. Hancock?
I'm wondering about the, if we're going to discuss any particular item, we'd have to...
We had to start over.
Right, you'd have to pull it off this consent to discuss. Do what? If you're going to discuss any particular item, we have to move to take that off the consent and just, consent just means you're going to approve it by acclamation or by majority vote not acclamation.
Right.
If you need to discuss one of the items, you need to ask them.
I need to withdraw my motion.
If he knows the number he wants to pull off, you can ask him to...
Now, I just want to talk about number three.
Mayor, I make a motion. We approve the consent agenda and pull out motion number three, or number three.
Okay, that's an amended motion, correct?
Yes.
Okay?
Yes.
A second then.
Second amended motion. Okay, now we're going to move on.
We'll take a vote.
Be items one and two only.
All in favor of approving that, items one and two? Motion passes. Now we will move on to item number three, which is resolution number R twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution R twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one as presented.
We got a motion?
I'll second.
And a second? Discussion?
Okay. I wonder if we could have more information before we approve this about what the museum does and whether or not they've been doing the various things that we are requesting of them on our agreement with them that we're opposing here and what agreement we've had with them in the past year and whether or not they have followed through with that. I just don't know. I'm ignorant about that. And as a councilperson, before we vote to spend money on it, I'd like to know where that money is going and what they're doing, when they're, when they're open, what functions they serve, and what they do.
Sure.
I'm not against the overall thing. I'd just like to have more information about it.
More information on it.
We have included funds in this budget to support them, but as Councilmember Ward pointed out, we do not have agreements with these agencies that we are funding. So we're making an effort to collectively, one by one, get all these agreements in place. And I know that was a sticking point for you too, Councilmember Cobalence. And we agree that these agreements need to be in place to seal what they're doing. If you would like for us to amend this to include some of those parameters, like their mission and their hours and what they...
That's what I had written down here, you know, when are they open, a number of visitors that come there. It used to be primarily a children's program, I remember, and we decided to delete things like the Boys and Girls Club or the Summer Youth Program and not fund that kind of thing. And I don't know if any of us know what their mission statement is and what they're trying to accomplish.
Okay.
And hopefully they can do something great, but I'd just like to know about it.
If you need us to do more fact finding, we can absolutely do that and bring this back.
I think part of it is, and Ronnie can correct me, there's all, when Mr. or Dr. Weinheimer, I'm sorry, Dr. Weinheimer donated the animals to the museum or to the city, we basically agreed to take that on for now and forever. And that, I know that was one of the primary roles and responsibilities, but I didn't remember the funding on top of that. I know we paid for the space and insurance maybe.
We've never had an agreement.
Oh, okay.
So...
But I remember that being discussed.
That's why this is so important.
That's how we got involved with the museum.
I mean, we have a lease agreement with them, or we lease the space to them, but this agreement is for funding to run the museum.
It would also be interesting to know what our insurance costs are and obviously we give them the, their space rent-free and we provide them with their electricity and everything, I'm sure, and maintain their building, the structure. But I don't know what our costs are, what our insurance costs are, or anything else.
Okay.
Okay.
We will coordinate.
So is the way to do that then is to have Mr. Hancock amend the motion to postpone?
Yes.
Until we receive the necessary information?
That's, that's the way it should be.
So I should offer a motion, I'm supposed to move to postpone this till, maybe discuss it in more detail at our next meeting?
You can amend, you can move to amend the current motion to say, so accepting it or passing it to postpone it, then we would vote on that to accept the amendment, which would supersede, we would get a second, it would supersede this, and then we vote again.
Okay.
Yes.
So did I state that correctly then?
Is that right, Kaylee?
Or you can move to table it until the next meeting.
Yeah.
That'd be the easiest thing to do.
That'd be the easiest thing.
We still need to dispose of this vote, either let this vote not be...
It's a postpone. Because the table has to come back next time. Postpone comes back when it meets the criteria and which is set for.
Right. Is that right?
So, Mr. Mayor, may I make a motion to amend the current motion approving R two zero two five dash twenty-one? And I'll have further discussion at our next meeting.
Okay, we got a motion?
To amend.
To amend resolution number R twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one.
I'll second.
We got a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes to amend resolution R twenty five dash twenty-one.
So now that's the most, that's the motion on the floor.
Yes.
Want to vote again?
Yes, we need to vote again.
Now, this is the motion. So now the motion is postponed until...
Right. Anybody like to make that motion?
It's made.
It's made?
We just made it.
Okay.
And it's seconded, so now it's a vote.
Anybody?
I believe.
We can just take the vote.
Yes, take the vote, yes. All in favor? Motion passes. Or any further discussion? Motion passes.
No, it's already passed.
Yeah.
All right, moving on to item number seven, consideration of action on ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero six.
Yeah, and if you're counting ordinances, you see this one might be a little out of order. This agenda item was added on Friday morning because of some changes with the, the election. And I'm going to, I'm going to read the narrative so as to not add some extra information. On April tenth, we were, we received an update from the Worton County Elections Administrator regarding changes to the early voting schedule and polling locations, as well as Election Day locations for the upcoming elections that deviate from the ones in your agreement and the service contract between us and the Worton County. And some of these are polling hours, as well as there is no East Bernard location, polling location. And we had that in our agreement, however, that will not be taking place this year. And due to these modifications, we need to modify our ordinance to reflect those changes. And so that is what this, this does effectively.
Have we voted on Sundays before?
Not yet.
I don't think so.
No, not that I'm aware of.
Not that I'm aware of.
And some of this came about at the request of the ISD, who offered to pay for it. So they will be paying for the extended polling hours, not, not the city. But that's how that came about.
The expense rolls off if you don't pass the ballot.
You are not the only city affected by this. The city of Worton will also be making this change as well.
Hmm.
Both resolutions are in the packet if you want to compare them.
Mayor, I read it all and I move to approve ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh six, amending the ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh three to revise the days, hours, and locations of early voting and Election Day voting locations and the general election to be held on May third, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, we got a motion. Anyone want to second that motion?
Second.
Got a motion, a second, any discussion?
I'd like to know why. I mean, we only have one place, one thing we're voting on. Why can't, we can't just leave it the way we've had it forever? And, I mean, why are we amending the hours?
I'll allow Kaylee Cudella, our city secretary and person responsible for our elections, to probably...
So all, yes, ma'am. So all of our elections, we contract with the county, which means we have joint elections, so we have joint polling locations. So anytime one of the other entities, if they're open for their polling, we should be open for the same hours as well. Because, you know, we have joint ballots, so the ISD ballot is on our ballot as well. So it only makes sense. It seems like there was a breakdown in communication between the county and the cities, relaying the information, the changed polling dates and locations.
Okay, I just wondered, because we only have one person on our ballot, but I understand it now.
Yeah, it's, I think the school requested it for additional opportunities for residents to vote on their bond election. From what I understand, that was their, their desire and they agreed to pay for it all. So I think maybe she didn't realize that we also needed to change our information as well. The new elections administrator, this is her first election, it was a learning lesson, so now she knows it affects all parties involved.
Thank you.
We might need to clarify that in the future.
Oh, yes, sir. Yes, sir, yeah, as soon as, so, yes.
I mean, they could be voting till midnight or all kinds of things, just because one entity requested it.
Yes, sir. So there is a whole, a whole petition process that they have to go through with the county for if one, so like if y'all wanted to extend our voting hours, there is a process that you have to go to, to get that approved at the county level. But it still has to be communicated to the rest of us. But it did help that they agreed to pay for it, so we're not taking that burden on that cost. So generally, our voting hours are what is required by law. We stay in line with what the Secretary of State says. So the school district is wanting to go above and beyond to allow those extended voting hours. Yes, sir.
So this change is just for this cycle?
Oh, yes. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Unless, you know, ideally, this would have happened and been communicated with us back in February. So whenever we start doing all of these, so whenever y'all, well, really, we called our election back in January. So we would have, ideally, have had that done back then. So no, it would be election by election. Like I said, by default, our election, our contract says whatever the Secretary of State says the minimum hours are, or the ideal hours.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
We got a motion, a second. All in favor? Motion passes. Thank you. All right, now we're moving on to resolution R twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two. And we've got, someone wants to speak on that?
Yes, yes, sir, you do. He wants to speak and then you can feel free to...
Hello, my name is Dustin. I live in Worton County. I oppose this regulation that y'all put on. I don't think y'all noticed that the election happened. We have a new president called Donald Trump. He's for cutting regulations and barriers for making money. First off, it's not even y'all property. Even if it's commercial property, you shouldn't have no say-so into it if they want to sell a car or they don't want to have cars sold on them. They can get it towed. Same thing for the streets, public streets. Y'all have an ordinance for, I think, was it three days? If a vehicle stays there too long, you can tow it or tag it or something like that. Y'all have laws already to accomplish what y'all want, but y'all trying to force people to pay y'all more money. And does the, what you call it, the permit or whatever y'all say, does it cost money? And how long does it take to get that done? Y'all answered that? It's procedural?
Yeah, she'll, she'll be covering it.
Okay. I don't believe y'all should, making this ordinances, y'all just making it harder for people. Everybody from the city manager this way, maybe Kyle is the only one is, but every time I come, y'all always putting regulations on the citizens or the business people. And I don't think y'all should be doing that. Y'all should be making it easier for people to make money. Y'all might not like it, or y'all friends not might like it, like dealerships, y'all trying to restrict people from selling cars. I don't know what's going on with that. Y'all have some friendly relationships with the dealerships or something like that, but that needs to stop. This is class warfare y'all represent, y'all, y'all conducting for this council. Y'all always try to put regulations in. And I don't know, y'all just trying to keep everybody down, trying to make no, make no money? It should be easier. And I am gonna kind of push y'all on this instance, go into these departments and thinking about having a business here. And I'm gonna be asking certain questions and see what things I have to jump through to get it. And I'm gonna come back to y'all to see what needs to be taken out and what is unreasonable to do a business in this count, in this city. It is not good. And a lot of people have said that. This is not a business friendly and it's not a tax friendly, taxpayers friendly town here. Y'all shouldn't vote for this. Y'all should take it out. Stop helping your friends. Thank you for your time.
Resolution R twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two.
Hi, you guys. Okay, at your last meeting, you approved not allowing businesses to have privately parked vehicles for sale at the March twenty-fourth meeting, and that was a beautification-related effort to help fight blight. Something we did not talk about is waiving the fee for the S U P. So any of the businesses that did want to allow someone to park their vehicles and put them for sale, they can apply for the S U P process. It's a $250 fee. And so at the request of a council member, we put in here a fee waiver from the date of March twenty-fourth, when we adopted that resolution, for ninety days. It can change if you want, but I put it in for ninety days to allow anybody that does want to continue allowing people to park vehicles for sale of their property to go through this process without paying the S U P fee, so that they can become in compliance. And at this time, we have not made contact with any properties that do have private for-sale vehicles parked at their locations and waiting to see what the decision would be.
So I'll just say this, I, you know, we, we, we passed this motion last meeting and talking to some of the people that did this kind of work, maybe this targeted others, we, we probably should have done some more research. And so when we sent the email that said, hey, we want to apply for this, it was, okay, then you got to do all this stuff plus the $250. And while I am for zoning, I think that helps cities, zoning allows us to control different things, I do think that by us making this decision without talking to some of the people that are more actively managing it, I thought it was unfair to tax them, a $250 fee. So I do think the ones that are doing it and they want to continue to do it, I think we should waive their fee in the first ninety days and make contact with them. And I would ask planning and zoning to not make it really hard on them. I know that's not my call, but anyway, I just think it was, it was a rushed decision. I'm still for it because ultimately, they can take care of it. I just don't think that it's fair to tax them, that's what it is, is the tax, for something that they've been doing. And we, I, I thought it was, we should have thought it out further. So that's...
And just so you're all aware, the S U P process is zoning related, so it's regulated by state law. So we would process it like we do any S U P, where it gets publicly noticed, it goes to P and Z, and it comes to you all. So we do make it as quick as we can. I try to turn it around with as little time as possible. And in this case, if it's approved, we just wouldn't charge the $250 fee.
So it's a ninety days from, it's from March twenty-fourth to June twenty-fourth?
That's right.
Is that to, is that to file for the S U P or is that to have the whole process completed?
Just to apply for it.
Okay.
So the application still is made, but for those ninety days, people that are currently selling cars at their place have been, would just have a waiver of the fee?
Right. If they want to apply to continue, then they would do the application, they could keep doing it, and they just don't pay an application fee.
So, okay, I understand that clearly. So what if someone new comes up and wants to do it? They pay the fee?
After the ninety days, yes.
No, before the ninety, if they haven't been and they want to now during this ninety days.
It would depend on how you wanted to do that. You could say that would be the case, or we would just apply it to anyone that's in violation.
I think it, I think it would be anyone.
Anyone?
That's what it should be.
If you follow the ninety days, if you can, you should, you should...
That's how, that's how...
We didn't write it one way or the other.
So let me get this right. After ninety days, this deal's off. They're just gonna have to pay the $250. I'm not gonna be for that.
Okay.
I think a private person's property, I agree with Dustin. I've talked to Daryl Hopper. He has customers and he has friends.
Yeah.
And he has a G C C A boat there. I know that's nonprofit, but it's his property. He pays, he pays taxes on the property.
Sure.
And if he wants to let somebody, one of his customers sell a vehicle, and, and I know Daryl, he's not gonna let them put junk out there and just leave it there. We can, I think we need to revisit that and make, make it where the property owner has the right to do that without paying $250.
We can do that. We can, we can adjust the ordinance and bring it back and repeal and replace what you adopted this last month. And we could do it such that it does allow a commercial property owner. So the only things that I would need to know in your direction to redo that is under what terms you would want somebody? Would it be like the owner has to provide the proof of permission, because otherwise you have properties around town. You know, we, we have to find a way to validate it, but I can absolutely adjust your ordinance for that.
Yeah, I would, I would think the property owner has to have permission. I'm not for like where the old Stanleys used to be, where lining up five or six cars like they're selling it like a used car lot. I'm not for that. Let me get that straight. But I'm talking about somebody especially like Daryl Hopper, or even at my place. If I've got a good location that they drive by, if somebody, one of my customers asks me if he can put a car there and, and he spends enough money with it, I'm not gonna tell him no.
But why, but why are you allowed to put it in front of your shop, but the Stanleys people aren't?
Well, I'm talking about five or six cars, Blake, not just one.
Yeah, but I mean, it's a, I get it. I'm completely okay with where you're coming from.
Yeah.
But to make a blanket umbrella deal, that's a tough one. I mean...
Well, we don't want to operate, when we're talking about multiple cars, that's to me more like a used car lot, instead of a private business, letting one of their customers sell. But there's, I mean, I hate to beat a dead horse, but the, there was an S U P approved for the, the shop across from the Baptist Church, and they're selling cars there as well. I drove by two or three times because it caught me off guard. There's not only selling cars, they're selling youalls, they're doing a little bit of everything, and I can't imagine the S U P covered all of that. Because I remember previous council pretty adamant about not having what's there. I just, I, are you asking to revisit the ordinance? Yeah, I'm asking to not charge the, the property owner $250 to let one of his customers sell a vehicle. Then what's, there's no key to the ordinance. Yeah, Stanley's revisiting the order, yes.
So would you like me to take that S U P requirement out and maybe put in their permission for commercial property owners to allow private sale vehicles on their property? And do you want to put a cap on that? Maybe two at a time or something similar?
I'd, I'd like to rewrite it. I mean, I'm just one vote of seven people up here.
I don't disagree with you. I, I think maybe there's a better way to handle it as well. If, if maybe, maybe, maybe this is another postponement and we just have some discussions.
I would think so. We need to revisit this.
You could, we could...
What justification are you gonna have to, between one and six? And how do you expect our code enforcement people to enforce that, one and six? And how are we gonna mark when that car's there? I mean, you either gotta decide you don't want to sell these used cars and businesses or you don't, because you're, you come up here and you yell at your enforcement people at least once a month, because I, I hear it and I prosecute what they file, but yet you don't want to give them any tools to work with. So y'all got to make up your mind. You either want to clean it up or you don't.
Let me comment on this. I think maybe what we ought to be doing is revisiting this whole thing. And I apologize for bringing it up and for looking at it, but just what comes to my mind is, I know there is a used car lot on Highway seventy-one, block or two down from the post office, and they also sell cars on the lot next to them that is zoned residential. That's been brought up a few times and they've been made to clean off that lot a couple of times because they were selling them on a residential lot that joins their commercial lot. But at the same time, we've still got the issue that kind of relates to this of auto repair places storing their cars on lots that are zoned residential. We had a big discussion here when these people down south on seventy-one bought the lot next to them and it was zoned R one, and we made them keep it as R one. They still pile their cars up there that they can't get replaced or repaired, I'm trying to say. Maybe they can't get parts, they can't get paid to repair them. But, uh, you can look around town at, on any number of car repair places, and there's no telling how long some of those cars have been parked there beside them, uh, just because, uh, it's not economical to repair them, so the cars just sit there. The, uh, owners of the repair places probably don't have titles to them and probably can't dispose of them. But there's a whole package of things that we could be looking at, uh, just like this, about
if I'm not.
How long cars can be sitting in a particular spot.
To clear this up a little bit, if I'm not mistaken, the only thing that's on the table right now, whether or not we're going to, if we're going to wa- waiver this two fifty.
That's correct.
And that's what we need to deal with now?
Yeah, and that, that, there, a little history on the fee. The reason the fee exists is because of the publication, publication notices. We have to fund those publication notices, because she has to advertise for that. And so that, it's not just an arbitrary tax. We set it because we use it to help, we use it to pay for those publication notices. Uh, I'm not trying to influence you one way or another. I'm just, uh, reminding you of why it was set to be.
Right.
It wasn't ever a revenue generator. That's not, that wasn't the intent.
An option.
I just wanna clarify that.
An option would be to, to, like you said, Tom, is to, uh, address item two.
Yeah.
For the ninety days. Vote on that, yea or nay? And then, and then we can also ask that, that, that ordinance be brought back.
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
We can further have some more discussion on that.
Yes. But you can postpone this item as well.
Yes, you can.
We can, I guess, but I thought, well, anyway, yeah.
I mean, but.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution R twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two as presented.
We got a motion?
A second.
And a second? Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Any further discussion?
Okay.
So hold, hold on, hold on.
Yeah, what was the, uh?
It was four, it was three, four, it failed.
Yeah, failed.
But the question now is, what is, 'cause I'm not gonna be here much longer, what does council wanna do with this ordinance? Or is it, it over?
We'll bring, we will be, we'll bring it back as the next meeting.
I would, I would, I would, but before you do that, th- this is one thing that's, has bothered me for two years. We pass an ordinance, and then we come back a week later, and we look at changing it. I think before that we, let's, let's, let's vet it out a little more, make sure it's where it needs to be. Because there were some things that, I spoke to Darryl as well, and he brought up that I didn't even think about. Trailers that are for sale, you know, the cars. It was to address, and I understand, you're trying to clean up the town. I get that. But I noticed over the weekend, all the cars were gone from McDonald's. Does that owner even know? Maybe he doesn't want them there, and he'll handle it himself. I don't know. Maybe it's just let's think about it all the way through before we make a decision and come back. That's all. Uh, I would like to give, you know, when we do bring it back, publicize that we're gonna bring it back, and any of the landowners that wanna do this, that way they can come here and they can have their say also, instead of just saying, hey, guess what? We made a rule, and you can't do it anymore. That's, you know, that's not right.
All right. We're gonna move on. Motion failed, so moving on to item number three. Resolution R twenty twenty-five dash twenty-three.
This is the awarding of the Town and Country Neighborhood Street Reconstruction to Matagorda Construction and Materials in the amount not to exceed three million, one hundred and ninety-one thousand, five hundred and thirty-seven dollars, and authorizing, uh, myself or my designee to execute all related documents. And all the information is included in the packet. Our engineer, Brian Greer, is in the audience. He's with Quiddity. Unfortunately, uh, Matagorda Construction could not be with us. A family emergency arose this evening, and we were notified of that. Uh, but we, Matagorda Construction has been vetted, um, and is included in the recommendation by our engineer. Just a reminder that when you first went out to bid, the low bid was five million, four hundred and forty-one thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars. And at that time, staff recommended that you reject the bids. You did not reject the bids, uh, on, on the fourteenth, but on the twenty-eighth, you did reject the bids. And one of the things that we did was pull out a utility component of that, and that is part of the reason, we believe, uh, that these prices are so advi- uh, are so great for you at, at, at this time, uh, is because we were, we were able to pull out a utility component, which you approved in February, and that work has since been completed. Uh, and so, uh, we also met with the engineers and looked at the plans. There is not a scope change here, um, a- aside from the utility component. Uh, it was noted by one of our council members that this says phase one, uh, so are we intending to do this in phases? And, uh, the answer to that is, we do plan to go along, uh, Myatt and down Wallace and that area, and that would be phase two. Uh, so I think it's a bit confusing, to your point. Uh, this makes it sound like we're, we're chopping this up and doing it in little pieces. That is not different from what you did before. Uh, this project now is under budget. Um, and, uh, we're very pleased about that, because the project exceeded the budget quite a bit before. Uh, so we ask for your consideration. Kevin or Brian will probably be better, uh, informed to answer any questions regarding the bids. We will be happy to take any questions you may have.
I'd like to say, I appreciate very much the engineering company and the recommendation we got from staff. Saving the taxpayers two and a half million dollars is a big deal.
Big deal.
It goes a long ways, and I wanna commend everybody that, that had the foresight to say, let's put this off until after the election and see what happens. And what happened is, we just saved the taxpayers almost two and a half million dollars.
That is correct. That is correct. And, uh, appreciate that, Councilman Hodges, and, uh,
Thank you.
We've got, uh.
I've got a couple of questions, though. So we, we budgeted, or we approved debt funding for X amount of dollars for the reconstruction of the road, and, and that included drainage and water and sewer improvements, correct?
That's correct.
So all of those go together. This is just the construction of the road and the drainage. So we need to add, let's, let's be fully add everything to it, transparent that the water improvements, the sewer improvements need to be added to this. Plus, what was the cost? Yeah, they will. They have to be.
When you add them in, we're still under budget.
Okay, but what was the cost? So why did the, what did you do, what did the engineering do differently?
You may be able to answer that, Brian.
'Cause we paid to have something redone, because I remember us talking about re-scoping it and making some changes.
And just for the record, tonight, you're only considering the awarding of this bid. That's why we did not present this as a total project. Uh, if you follow it, we've already paid two-hundred thousand. You're still under budget, what was projected for this project with the two added together.
But what was changed, though? That, that's what I'm trying to understand.
The change was in the storm sewer more than anything else. We reevaluated it, um, based off the criteria in the area. Um, the rules for the city of El Campo were just a little vague, so we did some tweaking. We also changed it. We added a bid alternate for going from concrete pipe to plastic pipe. It just allowed for more competitive bids, especially, I guess, just the climate really changed. Uh, there was just more certainty with the contractors, uh, even with all of the, all the tariffs that were in place. Uh, they, they just had a better feel for the market, so.
So.
It was just a timing.
What's this, there's two, there's an option on there, right? What was the alternate? 'Cause I, that's not in the packet what the difference was.
Between.
Like it's thirty, three-point-two million or three-point-one million? What was the difference?
There were bid alternates in place for pipe bursting, um, bid alternates in place for concrete pipe versus, uh, plastic pipe. I, I don't have them.
Okay, that's fair.
They're right, they're.
I guess what I, yeah, well, it doesn't say what they are. It just says.
It doesn't. There's a, there's a breakdown, uh, but it, it comes down to additional sidewalk on Meadow Lane, um.
So some of this is, there is a slight change in the scope and then also the standard. So I go back to that. We, when we originally presented this, and you presented it as, not you, but it was presented as, this is what we need and this is the plan. We didn't get the number we wanted, so we go back and we change it. So why didn't we get the better deal upfront? That's, that's what I'm, why, 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 why are we not doing it with the concrete over the plastic, if that was the way we were told to do it at the beginning? I just, I don't like the way we changed to, to meet a number. Let's do it right the first time, so that we don't have to go back and do it the second time. That's, that's all.
Sure, and if I can address that, some, some of these spots that are, the drainage pipe are going, are gonna be out of the travelway. So it can be the HP pipe, uh, which is, which is fine there, because you're not gonna be driving on it. The other issues are the, uh, the flow of it, so we were able to get some better numbers on the flow size. So that's, that's how, what he was talking about earlier.
Okay, that's fair. I guess all I'm saying is, is we need, that's again.
The competitiveness in the first place, the, the, the utility numbers were what's, were skewed in the first bid. They, they were way, way high.
We just have to flush things out and have them. It's no different than that ordinance. Um, Matagorda Concrete, did they rebuild Nile Valley Road?
Ooh.
In Bay City, or do you, I saw a video that showed them doing it. Did they do the on-ramps?
Okay.
They did do the, the, the Egress, not, is it?
They're doing that right now. They're almost done.
I think they're finished. But yeah, okay. No, I think they're a good company. That was a big mess.
They didn't bid on the first pro- they didn't bid the first.
Not the first one. They're, they're highly competitive when they do make bids, um.
They should do a good job.
Yes, they, we've had a lot of success with them in the past. They are very reasonable to work with. They, we, we've seen them use, uh, Waller County very often as well. They're from this area. They, they, they do good work when we do get to work with them.
Yeah, all, all I, I, I wish for council and staff to ask the what ifs and what could be's and, and bring those. That way, you're, you don't have someone like me asking the what ifs and what could be's, and it makes it easier on you. It also makes it easier for the community to see, this is exactly what we're getting. Maybe we're, you know, they, they don't question or doubt the people that are doing the work. That's all. But yeah, Matagorda Concrete, they, uh, that Nile Valley Road, I was there, it col- it started collapsing after the city built it. They didn't do, uh, or the contractor, they didn't stay on top of it, and they had to close that road. And I've seen some of their work. They do good work.
Are you looking for a motion?
Yes.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve Resolution R twenty twenty-five dash twenty-three, awarding the Town and Country Neighborhood Street Reconstruction Phase One to Matagorda Construction and Materials in the amount not to exceed three million, one hundred and ninety-one thousand, five hundred and thirty-seven dollars, and authorizing the city manager or designee to execute all related documents.
We had a motion. Anybody like to second that?
Second.
We had a motion and a second. All in favor? Any further discussion? Motion passes. Moving on to item number four, consideration and approval of replacement purchase of five EMS stretchers.
Good evening. Um, back in two thousand and ten, we started replacing our stretchers with the power stretchers, um, from the manual stretchers to the power stretchers. So I think over the next five or six years after that, we had slowly replaced one or two at a time, until we got the full fleet of power stretchers. Those stretchers are now eight to fourteen years old, um, and they have a recommended service life of seven years. However, we've been maintaining them, keeping the preventive maintenance on them to make them last as long as we can, 'cause they're still working. Why not? Um, but the, the company did discontinue them in early, uh, March of this year. Um, so they're gonna start weeding them out and not servicing them anymore. Um, so we're looking to buy new stretchers, especially since we're in a posi- a financial position this year that we have the money to buy them outright. Um, so we put together a committee of five or six employees. We evaluated the two different popular stretcher brands out there, and the committee selected Stryker, our same company, as the number one. And that actually ended up being the cheaper version, 'cause if we went with the Ferno, we would have had to replace our power base that loads it into the ambulance as well, and that would ended up being three-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand. Um, so here, we can keep our same power base that has another eight to twelve, fourteen years on, well, eight to whatever years on it. Um, eight to ten years, so that, uh, we don't have to replace those anytime soon. And we'll just keep moving those power bases to ambulance, to ambulance, until we need to replace those. Um, so with this, the quote is from Stryker for five new stretchers, extra batteries, chargers. It comes with a two-year manufactured warranty, and then go ahead and buy in the five-year extended service plan upfront. So we're gonna be covered for seven years, so we shouldn't have any money to spend on these stretchers for the next seven years, um, for a total of two-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand, two-thirty-seven seventeen. We do, for the old stretchers, we've gotten quotes from different companies, and we'll look at disposing those anywhere from twenty to twenty-four thousand that can come back and help cover some of this as well. But the main source of our funding is our billing revenue has been doing outstanding this year. Um, as of the halfway point of the fiscal year, we're already at eighty-eight percent of our budgeted, uh, billing revenue. So at the end of last month, we're at seven-hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand, and we budgeted nine-hundred thousand. So we're projected to exceed our revenue by three-hundred-and-twenty-five to seven-hundred thousand, depending on how the last five to six months could turn out. Um, I will apologize on the suggested action, getting to know this new software. I missed updating that when I, uh, we got the higher quote on the trade-in, and we pulled it out of Stryker and are gonna give it to a different company. So the suggested action would just be to approve the purchase of five new Stryker stretchers, including extra batteries and chargers for a total of two-twenty-four, two-thirty-seven seventeen from Stryker sales. Any questions?
Anybody like to make a motion?
Mayor, I make a motion we approve the, uh, purchase of five, uh, new Stryker stretchers, including extra batteries and chargers for a total of
What was it?
Two-twenty-four.
Two-twenty-four, not two-oh-four.
Yeah, two-twenty-four, two-thirty-seven.
Two-twenty-four.
Two-thirty-seven.
Two-thirty-seven seventeen cents.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, uh, to approve the five new stretchers in the amount of two-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty-seven seventeen cents. All in favor? Motion passes.
How long will it take you to get them? Three to four weeks. So they'll work tomorrow. Hopefully by beginning of May, we'll have them.
All right. Moving into reports.
Yeah, the final.
They'll just drive themselves down the street.
The final i- agenda item this evening is, included in your packet is a list of the roads to be seal-coded this year, as well as a list of the proposed full-deep reclamation streets, so that you have that information for yourselves and your constituents. If you have any questions about this, Kevin Thompson can answer them.
I have just a point of discussion. When, uh, the school system, uh, built their weightlifting facility, they had, they dug a hole about eight feet deep over there, and then filled it back up again. And they had tremendously heavy, uh, dump trucks going up and down Meadow Lane the whole time, and they basically destroyed that road. That road kinda is getting pushed down into the ditch. And is there any way that the city can regulate, uh, how much weight goes down which roads when there's a construction project like that going on?
I don't know.
I, I don't know how the city could regulate it, but it is an issue. It is a problem.
But when, when, I just watched that constant stream of those trucks that weighed over a hundred thousand pounds apiece, running up and down that road, and, uh, and you could just see the thing cratering.
That's happening to some of the other roads.
Yeah.
At the stop signs, like Sioux Street. There are spots on Sioux Street that's gonna need to be rebuilt. The Town and Country is gonna have to be rebuilt. And the more, when you, when you add those stop signs, now people, all that weight is pushing down, and that's causing part of that problem. And then you've got more, the garbage trucks are bigger and heavier, and they're doing some of the damage as well. And the fact is, is I, we, we had a plan in two thousand and fifteen to, on how to manage these roads and some of the repairs early on, and we just, we never really got to it and never really did anything. It's just gonna be a continuous battle, and it's gonna take tremendous amount of money to maintain and get caught up.
I mean, like, if, if this bond issue should pass, uh, I don't know which way the, these trucks will be routed to, uh, basically build a, have a new high school. But maybe we could figure out which of our roads are the weakest and keep them off of there or something.
Right. Do it like the county does.
You can restrict traffic, it's heavier traffic on certain roadways.
Anyway, it's just something to be thinking of as we're making these kind of plans.
They could put a bond up as well. The county makes them put up a bond or something that, you know, whatever damages to the road, and then they can either repair it, or they can use the bond to repair it. And if they don't do any damage, or they fulfill the obligation, they release the bond. That's one way. But we don't wanna become known as unfriendly to growth. That, that's.
Yeah, that's right.
We gotta be very cautious. It's a balancing act.
Well, that's all we have tonight. We don't have to make a motion or anything on that, and, uh, this meeting is adjourned.